All right. Good morning, everyone. It is 9:00 AM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Cottington County Board of Commissioners to order. It is Tuesday, May 11th, 2021. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Commissioner Waterman, would you lead us today? Thank you. Sorry, Cindy. I would just ask if you have a cellphone, if you could silence it, and if you need to take a call, if you could step out in the hallway. And also, we are streaming live on YouTube. So those are opportunities for people to go back and catch the meeting later. Item number two, call for public comment. We will still allow people to call in. The two numbers are 882-624-8 and 882-6297. With any items that are not on the agenda and just would like to bring it to our attention, we will do that during the open part of the meeting. Item number three, conflict of interest items. Are there any on the agenda, fellow commissioners?
No.
No.
All right. Item number four, action to approve the May 11th, 2021 agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Item number five, action to approve the May 4th, 2021 minutes of the Board of Cottington County Commissioners. Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Monthly reports. We'll start with Cindy, auditor.
So this would normally be the month or the week that you would hear from the Director of Equalization and the Welfare Director also, but they are pulled out of town. So they will be doing their reports at a later date. As far as my office, other than keeping up with our monthly regular duties, we have preliminary taxable values for the taxes payable in 2022. Our Consumer Price Index plus our growth of value comes to 2.3% this year. So that means we can increase our property tax, property tax collection by approximately $203,000 for taxes payable in 2022, which will be used to fund our 2022 budget. We are also working with the City of Watertown right now to prepare their ballots for their upcoming city elections. We've run into a bit of a snag because they are changing the way they're, this time they're changing. They're going from 10 councilpeople down to five, and several of those races are only for two years. Our system is not set up through the state of South Dakota to provide for that type of election. So I'm working with the state to get that resolved so we can get their ballot prep going. And other than that, we are just getting in a few of the 2022 budget requests. They're coming in slowly. The department heads are kind of holding off because they, they're not sure what to do on the wage portion of the budget request for 2022. But we are getting some of the nonprofits coming in slowly. So that is basically where we are at.
Just question, ma'am, so the 2.3, that's CPI plus valuation?
CPI for pay 2022 is 1.2, and our growth is 1.1%. And that's what we are allowed to increase our property tax collection over the previous year.
2.3?
Yep.
All right. Any other questions for Cindy? Hearing none, then. Let's move on to item number seven, action to approve the auditor's account with treasure and note, monthly registered deeds fees.
The monthly registered deeds fees were collected in April in the amount of $49,139.80. And then you also have the report of the cash and cash items as of the last business day of April. The second page there shows you where all our cash fund balances are throughout county funds, the general funds, special revenue, and the trust and agency funds. You can see that in the trust and agency funds, there's a $10 million figure and a $2.3 million figure that totals into our bottom cash total. That's not our money. That's money that will go to the schools and the cities and the townships when we pay out their apportionment for tax collection in April, which is one of the biggest collections dates of the year.
I'll move to approve the auditor's account with treasure.
Second.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any other additions, corrections, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight, action to approve an agreement with construction, Rick is here, on a bridge rehab project 15-240-155. Good morning, Rick.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is just a contract that Banner came up with for the contractor on the deck replacement on the bridge east of town. So just need your signature.
We previously talked about this one, right?
This is a bid you have already accepted. This is just the agreement to allow them to serve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Duzen. Any other questions, comments?
To just emphasize, this is something we already approved. This is the paperwork. And these are the pictures you showed us. You showed us some pictures of the bridge with the holes in the deck. So I have to get this replaced. So.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Move on to item number nine, action to authorize application for West Nile virus grant funds. That would be Steve, our weed supervisor. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning, Steve. Good morning. I had received this here a couple of weeks ago about this year's grants for West Nile applications. I would like to authorize to be able to apply for this. In the past years, I've been applying for 5,000. I'm looking at doing the same this year also.
Motion approved.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. And item number 10, action to authorize hiring of annual seasonal weed sprayers.
I currently have one gentleman that is on board, but the other one that I have had in the last few years also does some landscaping and mowing, and he says his business picked up a little bit this year, so he's not be able to help. So I need to pick up a couple of extra staff and try to relieve me from trying to be in the truck as much as I can too, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Gable, second by Waterman. Any other comments?
So will you be advertising? Is that what you're gonna do?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
That rate of pay is already set, right?
Yep.
For seasonal.
Yep.
We have a scale depending on experience, yeah.
Any other questions? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Item number 11, action to declare a computer in the welfare office surplus to be destroyed. Cindy, do you have that information?
I do.
Okay.
Direct, this is the welfare office. It is an older tower, and it's a Hewlett Packard computer. She is looking to have it declared surplus to be destroyed.
All right, we had a motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Gable. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. All right. Item number 12, review of the compensation and classification study from Dr. Victoria McGrath. Yep. Good morning.
Good morning. I need to apologize. I don't travel much on a course, but I do have a cold, so. Don't worry, I don't have COVID. I'm not contagious. It's just springtime allergies, so.
There's a lot of that.
Yeah. So thank you very much for inviting me here today. What I'd like to do is kind of run through a PowerPoint and kind of give you the executive version of what we've done and how we've done it, and making some recommendations. This is a safe presentation I will be doing this afternoon with some of the employee groups. When we do meet with employees, we will obviously make sure that we let them know that this has not yet been approved by the elected officials here. So with that, next slide, please. I'm Dr. Victoria McGrath. I'm CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group. We're the group that's been asked to come in and take a look at your compensation program. Just a little bit about us, there's two sides of the business. McGrath Consulting Group is the parent company, and we do public safety consulting, so police, fire, EMS. And then there's the HR component. We broke out to our own subsidiary corporation about 2012 because people thought we only did police, fire, and EMS, and we do everything from the county level on down. We currently do compensation studies, policy development, employee handbooks, job descriptions, all that fun stuff that most people dislike and some of us salivate over. Currently, we have about 425 clients in 38 states, so we are definitely not just an Illinois-based firm. Please. So we were asked to come in and do a couple of things. Number one, to confirm the county's pay philosophy. Where do you want to be within the market? At the conclusion of this, we basically have determined that you want to come in as the average, which is not unusual. I'd say almost 95% of our municipal clients want to pay at the average. I do have a couple that want to pay higher than average, and fortunately, in 21 years, we don't want anyone who wants to pay lower than average. But you are coming, everything that we are doing today is based on the average market rate. So sometimes employees will want to point to a figure and say, well, look, so-and-so in Watertown pays so much. Well, they do, but it's the average. It's not just one rate. To take a look at the external market, and we'll talk about that in a minute, but we did go and do an external market survey where we collected data at different data points in which to therefore make recommendations for your compensation system. We also wanted to look at internal equity because sometimes what happens, and especially here, is you've got multiple plans, and we don't know whether or not those positions want to align together, is a secretary in one area being paid as a secretary in another area. So we definitely looked at that, and we had employees participate, not every employee, but most employees participated in that. And then obviously, we combined all that information together along with conversations with you folks to come up with a recommendation, which we'll be talking about. And so the whole goal of this is to look at whether or not you are competitive in the market. We were asked to look at benefits. I won't go over the benefit portion very briefly, but benefits are very difficult to change very quickly. And so there's some recommendations in there for when you come into your next open enrollment or when you're looking at things that you can start saying, look, maybe we need to take a look at some of these recommendations. Next slide, please. So how did we do this? We spent a lot of time trying to learn your organization. Granted, I have done, I don't know how many compensation studies over the last 20 years, but we don't know Cottington. And so therefore, we spent a lot of time with department directors and talking with them, and what's your positions? What are your problem positions? You know, what are the issues that you're having to deal with? Because, you know, I can go into a highway department and have a position of a laborer, or what's a laborer? It could be anywhere from a seasonal worker to somebody who's a heavy equipment operator. So we wanted to make sure your titles, and we changed some of your titles when we looked to the external market because they were going to get more competitive information that way. You know, what's a maintenance tech? Well, is it a heavy equipment operator, light equipment operator, et cetera? We spent some time talking with commissioners. I had two individuals who were kind of my go-to people, and thank you very much for all your assistance, but then we didn't meet with everybody to at least kind of update everybody. And then obviously, spent a lot of time with your HR consultant, who's fantastic, by the way. And so then we did take a look at your current compensation system, your job descriptions, your current policies, making sure what you did. We did ask employees to complete something called a position questionnaire. For those of you, for those of them that had to do that, I'm going to bring back nightmares because it's about a 15, 16-page document that we asked employees to complete. It goes way beyond the job description and looking at positions. And what happens with that position questionnaire, it actually divides a job up into 13 different competencies. That actually gets points assigned to it, and then we can compare and contrast positions. So some people ask me, well, how can I do an administrative assistant to a heavy equipment operator? Well, they may be in the same pay grade because they ended up with the same number of points. You know, they may get, a secretary is not going to get a lot of points in heavy equipment and in environmental factors, but a highway person's not going to get a lot of points in technology or interaction with people. So that kind of balances those positions out. We then solicited data from 15 organizations. We actually went to 19. We have four that did not participate, and you do have a list of who those are. Sometimes it's nice to share those because when they come asking for you for information, you can say, well, you didn't exactly help us.
What I thought.
So anyways, but we did get very good data. And then obviously, we reviewed, once we had the draft scheduled together, we then sat down again with HR and with every department director and went through all the placements in those positions. In some cases, we may read something very differently in the position questionnaire from our notes than what the position actually does. And so we made a number of adjustments based upon that conversation. Next slide, please. Excuse me. So as we start going through the market data, there's something that I want to make sure everybody understands. There's something called a comp ratio. That's the ratio of what your salary is in comparison to the average market salary. We use 50% as the market. So if you're at a 50% comp ratio, you're paid exactly what the average market rate has. Now, the problem with that is that you can never come up with the right number. So if I'm at $25,000 and I make $23,200, well, wait, see, I'm 2,000, whatever, the number that is shy of that. And so we usually use a ratio. And most compensation standards use 10% around the average. So if you're between 40 and 60%, you're being paid fairly. You're within the acceptable range of salaries. Now, what we do do, however, is if you're between 40 and 44% comp ratio, we're saying, look, you're within the acceptable range, but you're getting a little bit on that low end. And maybe we need to take a look at those because if you don't do something with those positions in the next couple of years, they might fall behind. So even though they are acceptable, we do take a look at them. Next slide, please. So what we're looking here, and I do have to thank Lee, he redid all my charts. I need to take his class. But what we're looking at is the minimum comp ratio. What we're basically looking at is what is your starting salary? Step one for most of your positions, step eight when it comes to your department head positions compared to what the starting salary is of the schedules of the comps that we receive data from. And here is where we definitely have a little bit of an issue. 36% of your positions are under market. So we're looking at close to 15 positions here, and you don't have that many, that people are saying, look, our starting salaries are not competitive with the starting market. And that is something that we heard from most of the department directors and your HR director when we started the study, is that we're having problems getting people because our starting salaries may not be competitive. And that's definitely true with the market. You have another 29% that are in that 40 to 4%. So you have another bunch that are risky that, you know, they're probably not being competitive right now. Now, the problem what we're having with evaluating minimum salaries is this, is that there are a number of organizations, especially because of 2020, that they have not adjusted their salary schedules, but they're starting people higher than the minimums. So sometimes our minimums are giving us a false sense of security that when we look at the 64% and say you're in line, are they really in line because of the fact that you've got other organizations are saying, look, we're not going to start at step one anymore. We have to start at step three or step four, and their salary schedules have not adjusted for that. So basically, what we found is that your starting salaries are definitely a concern and need to be evaluated. Now, I hate to say this because this is always a tough pill to swallow for elected officials, but the biggest area of concern for this is your department directors. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, but your starting salaries for your department directors are definitely very much out of line. And if it's any consolation, that's not unusual. What we've been finding since 2008 to now is that a lot of organizations have spent a lot of their money on the lower end of the salary schedules and not enough on the higher end of the salary schedules. And so we're finding that there's a push now on the higher end of the salary schedule.
So can I just, so just to, it took me a while to understand this, but I think I got it. So this is about, as I was reading the drafts and stuff. So this is, position is not individuals.
Correct.
Important thing to emphasize.
Yes.
And this is, this is basically giving the starting end of the pay scale.
Correct. And that's one thing that's a very good point, Lee. Thank you so much. This whole thing, we are looking at positions. We are not looking at people. We never evaluated people. So we may put somebody at a higher pay range, and you go, oh, my God. You know, they're a rock star, and they should be paid higher. Or, oh, my God, you know, they're, it doesn't matter. We don't look at, we don't look at people. We're only looking at what are the skills, qualifications, education, responsibilities of the position, not of the people. Thank you, Lee. Next, please. A lot of people want to look at the max. You have 14 steps, which we'll talk about in a minute. Step 14 is basically 74%. Of it's aligned with the market. I don't pay much credence to the maximum of the schedules. I develop salary schedules that have anywhere from minimum to maximum, 30% to 60%. So maximums don't mean a lot to me, but you're okay when it comes to the maximums. Here's, yes, there's, here's the big one. What we tend to look at, and what I tend to spend more time on, is what are your employees making compared to what other employees are making? Because that, to me, is a true reflection of the market. Now, when we say average, we do do a statistical analysis around the average. So we come up with the average, and then we say, okay, let's take a look at it, and what percent above, what percent below, and we will knock out any outliers. So if there's somebody that's coming in way too high or somebody that's coming in way too low, we will definitely take those out of the average and recalculate the average. My famous saying, and I say this to everybody, not just you, is that the elected officials sitting here want me to keep all the low numbers in and all the employees wanting me to keep all the high numbers in, and I don't make either one of you happy. So therefore, we do take those out. This is actually a very good curve. You've got 19% under the market, but I expect to see some people under the market because you have some new employees. And so we should see those folks at the lower end of the salary schedule, just as much as we should see people at the higher end of the salary schedule. Now, that, to me, is a little concerning is because with the tenure of your organization, which we'll talk about, I would expect to see more people on the higher end of the salary schedule. And the problem we have here is those folks with the highest level of tenure are folks that have the shortest salary schedule. Your professional schedule only has steps eight to 14. There's only, there's not even a percent basically between them. So from their step eight to step 14, we're talking maybe about $2 or $3. So step 14 of the professional schedule isn't anywhere close to the starting schedule of where it should be. So I would expect to see more people in there. But the vast preponderance of your people are aligned with the market. So even though you have some problems with your salary schedule, most employees here, A, are not going to see huge increases, which I'm sure they're all going to be very unhappy about, but also, two, when we place them on the schedule, which I'll talk about, most of them are placed very close to where they should be within the updated salary schedule. So sometimes I walk in and say, okay, we've got a huge problem because we shifted the schedule so much. All of your long-tenured employees are now at the bottom half of the schedule, and really, you only have a handful of individuals that are in that. So you need to give yourself kudos, even though your salary schedule needs work. You've done a very good job of keeping up pace with your employees. And again, there's going to be exceptions. There's always positions that have fallen out of market, and you need to adjust.
Can I make, just make a point for people who are listening, just so, we asked Dr. McGrath to take a look at two things. You know, one is, are people being paid competitively? So that's, that's more or less good news. So they're 81% aligned with the market. But then the salary schedule that we use to figure that out is, over the years, has become extremely complicated and kind of illogical. And so that's kind of, and that's, that's the other thing. So there's two components here that we're dealing with.
Inconsistent.
Yes.
Basically.
So actually, you could probably skip the next slide because we just talked about it. So basically, your minimum salary schedule, that's okay. No, I appreciate it, are below market. We do need to fix those. And overall, your employees are paid competitively, so. The other thing that we want to talk about, if we ever talk about this, two other things before we get into what we recommended. One of the things that we look at, and one of the things that we say, there's more than just compensation. We need to look at the age and tenure of your organizations. That tells us a lot about what's going to happen down the road. First of all, you don't have a lot of turnover, which I think says a lot to your organization. But what I think is, not even say concerning, but something to keep on the radar, is that if you look at the picture to the left, which talks about yours of service, the people with the longest years of services are ages 55 and above. The folks below that have much lower tenure. So you're looking at two years up to seven years of tenure. Now, six years is what the Bureau of Labor, eight years is what the Bureau of Labor Statistics says is what your average turnover rate for government is. So I think what might be happening is you've kind of lulled yourself into this security because you've had great loyal employees for all these years, and as they slowly leave, you're going to have another group of folks that may not have that long tenure that you're kind of used to. So your need's going to be able to have to keep up with that salary schedule in order to make it competitive. The other thing, too, we look at what your age, age of your group is. And again, you know, the average age of your workforce right now is 40. So 30% of your workforce is, is under the age of 40. So you have about 41% of your employees that are close to eligible to, can retire within the next several years. And so again, what you're going to be looking at is, no offense to either generation, because I belong to the one on the 55 above, but that generation has a different set of what they want out of an employer than the group that's coming in. And so I think you're going to have to start looking at some things, maybe to be a little bit more creative, of what's going to attract someone to this organization. And I'm going to say this, and I don't mean any disrespect to Cottington, but Cottington's going to have to position their salary schedule to start looking at some of those individuals that are probably a little bit more experienced. Because if I'm a new college grad, no offense, I don't find this the hot spot. You know, it doesn't have the nightlife. It doesn't have the things that I'm looking for. But I've been, you know, I'm in my 30s, and I want to settle down and raise a family. This is the excellent place to come and raise people. So that's kind of the generation that you're going to have to look at. So having lower salaries to attract the new college grad may not be the way that you need to go. Yes, please. So the biggest issue you have is not so much how you, how you compare to the external market, although there's some areas of concern, is really your compensation system. I technically say you have two compensation systems because you have a bunch of them that are 14 steps. You have several of them that are only eight to steps to 14. But basically, when you look at it, each one of those alphabets, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, each has own independent schedule. So basically, you have 43 separate salary schedules. And what I did was, I actually took all 43 schedules and lined them up from step one, using that as my benchmark. And if you do that, you find that you have a number of schedules that are actually the same. So if you look at some of the line, some of the pay ranges in So if you look at some of the lines, some of the pay ranges in B, C, and F, they're actually the same pay ranges. So why do you have them in B, C, and F? In some cases, it could be the same pay range and there's only four cents apart between the pay range one to the next pay range. And your steps are very inconsistent. Over the years, the math has gotten a little wonky. And so therefore, you have steps that range from one point two percent all the way up to four point two percent. So someone may be thinking that I'm going from step one to step two and I'm getting a, a two percent raise. Well, maybe a four percent raise. It may be only a one percent raise. So it's a very, very inconsistent. And that's what happens to schedules over time. So really, the compensation system in and of itself is the one that really needs to be updated. Please. So what is a classification system? Just so that we're all on the same page. And this is definitely a point where I want to go to in the fact that a compensation system is basically a hierarchy of job titles. It's from the lowest position to the highest position. The lowest position is, and any less important is the high position. Obviously, however, the skill, education, decision-making judgment, obviously, complexity gets more complicated as you go up the chain of command. So what we look at is the skills education needed for the position. And some people will look at and say, well, wait a second, I shouldn't be placed on a pay grade ten because I have a master's degree. Well, first of all, congratulations for getting a master's degree. That's a great accomplishment. But is a master's degree required for the position? If you were to leave tomorrow and they were going to recruit for that position, is a master's degree required? And if it's only an associate's degree that's required, then that's what we're going to place the position at. If a bachelor's degree or master's degree is required, that's what we're going to place the position at. So what's required for the position, not what people have. Same thing with certifications, because a lot of your positions have certifications. If it's required for the position, it's obviously accounted for in the, in the salary schedule. If it's something that's nice to have, then we don't look at it. Then what you're doing is you're placing a worth for the position. We're not going to pay this position any plus than this. We're not going to pay the position anything more than that. So you're basically deciding how much that position is worth to this organization. In some cases, we might try to allow a career path. In the highway department, we have a one, two, three level and we have different criteria. If we're going to create levels, there has to be changes in responsibilities, education, experience that move to that level. It's not just because I'm here and breathing for another year, I get to move to the next level. So we worked with department directors. If they wanted that, they had to come up with concrete examples. We are working with the sheriff's department and obviously, it has to be negotiated, but we're looking at a stipend program to incent people to take on different responsibilities that they have. So we did look at that. But we're not looking at, when you look at this, when you look at the pay grade at the, at the appendix, we're not looking at what the individual's making. So we're not looking at a pay-for-performance type of system. In fact, we're not recommending a pay-for-performance system, other than the fact that I have to be doing my job in order to get the next step, which is what you currently have. But we're not looking at saying, okay, Suzie's my rock star, so we're going to give her four percent. John's doing okay and he's going to get two percent. And then you got Mary, you know, Mary's going to get nothing. So we're not recommending that. You don't have it now and we're not suggesting you move to that.
Excellent.
So we're basically going down to twelve steps. Fourteen steps is a little big. Twelve steps, I'd like to cut it down a little bit more, but we needed to take into account what your current employees are making. There are, what we have identified is the average market rate. So once a person gets to step six, they are earning the average market rate for the position. So anything above step six is making sure that they're now making higher than market. There is two and a half percent between each step. And what we did do, and what's in the appendix, is all the non-union positions, but we have put all the union and non-union positions under one schedule. Now, hopefully, you can keep it that way. But obviously, we understand that there's negotiations. And the reason why we did that is we wanted to make sure that there's internal equity. Because one of the problems you also have with your forty-three different systems is that there's sometimes where the superior and subordinate positions were kind of really close together. So why would I want to take a supervisor position or take that promotion to the next rank when, when there's really the salary schedule?
Don't benefit.
Doesn't, doesn't benefit me. So that's why we put it all on one schedule, so we can take a look at that, where that falls within the schedule.
And so that would keep, that would prevent like, you know, one department having, you know, where it's all long askew with, so one department supervisor getting paid like close to, say, what a, a non-supervising position in another department.
Correct. So when we place a position on the schedule, a lot of times, employees will want to look at just one thing. We look at multiple factors to place a position on the schedule. It's not just one thing. So we are looking at the external market. So we're looking at the position and what's its relationship to step six. We're also then looking at internal comparability. You know, are there other positions that do similar types of position responsibilities? The other thing we look at is compression. Compression can be multiple things. One of the things in compression is what we just talked about, superior to subordinate positions. At what point does a supervisor start moving past the subordinates that they supervise? There will be some overlap. There may be situations where a longer-tenured employee may make more money than a brand-new supervisor. That's just the way, you cannot build a system that that doesn't happen unless, of course, the money tree has bloomed in the backyard of Cottington. But at what point does that, that supervisor then move? And usually, it's around step four, five, or six is when that supervisor will make more money. Then also, the point factor. The point factor actually gives us points. We look at those points. We look at that grouping of positions. We then look at the market and how does that? So positions may have in the beginning the same number of points, but may end up in different pay grades because the market dictates something different. So.
So just, sorry to, sorry, but just, so we're not only, it's not just an external market thing, they're just looking at all the internal dynamics of the organization so that it all kind of flows together and makes sense.
In fact, we just were working with a county in Wisconsin and, you know, one of the employees said, well, and I should be paid grade higher because the county next door to me makes this much money in my position. Well, you're right, it does, but I also have to look at what the other counties make in that position. I also have to look at how you are in relationship with the other professional levels and that staff. So it's not just one thing. So here's an example of the step system. Here's the twelve steps. Six is the average market and I'm sure everybody could read that by small print. But anyways, what we do when we place people on the positions, this is the toughest part of a new compensation system, because what we're doing is resetting the grid. We're resetting your schedule. Now, we have to put people on it. And there's a cost to put people on it. And at this point in time, we do not look at tenure of the individual. What we look at is basically, what is the current pay of the individual and what's the step closest to their current rate of pay without a pay decrease? Because for some reason, pay decreases just don't sell very well. So people are going to get varying amounts of money depending upon what happened to their pay range and what their current salary is. And it has nothing to do with performance. It has nothing to do with the value of the individual. It's basically, how do I put people in the box and onto the schedule? That's all it is.
Based upon the position.
Based upon their position. So if I'm in a position and I've been placed in this pay grade and I'm currently making seventeen dollars an hour, what's the step closest to what they're currently making without a pay decrease? It's going to be step one, which is nineteen twenty-five. Therefore, I'm going to get a two dollar and twenty-five percent, two dollar and twenty-five cent increase. Okay? I could be here for twenty years and I'm going to be placed on step one. And you do have a couple of folks on the higher levels that have been here twenty, thirty years and are being placed on step one of the salary schedule. If I'm making twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents, what am I going to look at? Well, what's the step closest? Well, step four is twenty dollars and seventy-three cents. That would be a pay decrease. So I'm going to go to step five, which is twenty-one dollars and twenty-four cents. So I'm going to get twenty-six cents. And here's the tough pill to swallow, because you do have some employees in this boat. I'm making twenty-three dollars and forty-four cents. What's the step closest to what I'm currently making? Woo, step nine, twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. I got a penny. Woo, woo. Well, you did all this study and I got a penny. Again, this has nothing to do with the individuals, placing people on the step. And, you know, right now, we're approximately a hundred and ninety, two-hundred thousand dollars just to do that. Okay?
And that's just a clear, that's an annual cost.
That's the annual.
If we're going to kind of cover this whole year.
Right. So if you're looking at an implementation of September, you usually have three months of that. So I, I think people need to realize that as much as they would love to say, you know, I've been here for ten years, I should go to step ten, I will tell you, if you do that, you'll probably double to triple that amount of cost. Now, with that being said, a lot of your employees are really darned close to where they should be on the step. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see that. But the biggest hits are going to be in positions where, I'm not going to say them, where you probably know you're having problems difficulty recruiting. Those are the ones that have the highest lift when it comes to the salary, but most of your employees are doing pretty good. Now, here's what you guys need to do as, as the elected officials. You need to make sure you keep that schedule up. And there's two things that we have to look at. One is you have to lift the schedule on a regular basis. You have to increase that schedule so that it stays competitive with the external market. And then individuals need to move through that schedule. So here's just an example, predicting right now, looking at the trends, we're probably saying about twenty-twenty-two, one and a half, one and three-quarters percent needs to be added to the salary schedule. So this, again, is not your schedule, just an example. So if I was on step one at twelve fifty-three on January first, that schedule would lift by one and a half percent and I would go to twelve seventy. Okay?
Sure, I'm sure you can.
Okay. We are recommending that instead of anniversary increases, you simplify it and make it so that you do your performance evaluations and make your performance evaluations simpler. Do it April Bay so that by July one, everybody would get the step increase. And it just makes it simpler. Now, I know a couple of your department heads are saying, oh, we have so many, so many people I work with, counties much larger that do it this way. And again, I think you need, I haven't looked at your performance evaluation, but you're only looking at whether or not they're doing their job or they're not. So I think you can make that form much simpler and have a better, stronger conversation versus, you know, it's not going to be pay for performance. And then every three to five years, you need to go back out and do a dipstick to the economy. And the reason why I say three to five years, it depends upon what the economy's doing. If the economy's just kind of floating along and really not, you know, not doing that well, then you can wait five years. If it's, you know, the economy that we had last year, it's really cooking and it's really, then you may have to do it every three years. And that's a much simpler process. It's going out, doing another benchmark survey. Do you need to adjust the salary schedule? There's always going to be positions that need to possibly be changed in pay grades because some things happened with the market and you're done. And then that way, you can keep that schedule up.
My cursor will show.
Now, I'm going to switch gears and I'm going to do this very quickly. There's a lot of information in the executive report and Natalie has a lot more information when it comes to it. We did, we were asked to look at benefits. So we have made some recommendations when it comes to benefits. I do have a consultant who has worked with me on this. She's kind of my benefit expert. Basically, you have one hundred percent employee premium. First of all, congratulations. We do not see that across the country. That is going away like you wouldn't believe. And in fact, it is a little bit common for this area. You do have a number of employees in this area that are providing one hundred percent, but those are starting to go away as well. They're starting to offer different plans that have employee contributions. So I think that's something you need to look at once you get those salaries on that schedule. So we are looking at recommendations for different options for increased employee contributions, increased deductible plans, you know, offering maybe a high deductible plan with an HSA contribution. That's much more cost-effective for you. It's more cost-effective for the employee. It does, education does need to come along with that because some people get very scared when they see these high deductibles and then don't realize the HSA component to it. Usually, there's an employer contribution towards that HSA in the beginning to get people used to it and build that up. We need to monitor part-time employees. There's some rules out there for employees with thirty hours or less. And so you just need to kind of make sure you keep that on the horizon. We did offer some suggestions for wellness benefits. You know, people do certain things, they get, you know, discounts off their premiums. That's something that's been taking hold across the country. We did look at your time off benefits, your vacation, excuse me, your holiday and sick leave are right on target. So there's no changes you need to, those are very competitive with the external market. Your vacation accruals are a little lagging. Some of your competitors, you get their, they get their vacation a little faster than you do. And so we have recommended an updated schedule in there. We did make a recommendation for paid time off. Paid time off is where you combine vacation and sick leave together in the one bucket. It kind of treats your employees as adults. They don't need to pretend they're sick in order to take a day off. I think we have mixed reaction when we asked that question to your department directors during the initial study. I think you have about half that think that, yeah, this might be good. You have half that may not, you know. But we did give you a program in there that we recommend. You can obviously modify it to what you want. You know, we have a county right now that we're working with that is going to PTO. They are grandfathering folks. I don't think your payroll system could handle that, though. So if I want PTO, I opt into it. If I don't, I stay with the current vacation schedule and the current plan that I have. Any new employee has to come into PTO. And that's one thing I will say is, a lot of our recommendations are somewhat hindered a little bit by your payroll system, not your auditor, she's fantastic, but your payroll system needs to have a little bit more of a update to it because it's inhibiting some of the things that you can't do with that system. So something you need to look at. So I think the last slide says questions. I think I've talked long enough. Questions?
So to implement this is going to cost the county approximately a hundred and ninety thousand to two-hundred thousand? Is that what we figured?
Correct. And that's just salary. So you'd have to do the rollups with that.
Right.
It's ongoing.
It, yes, it is to some extent. It actually might be, and I asked Natalie because I heard you talking about your twenty-twenty-two budget. What I can very easily do is uplift the schedule by one and a half percent and move everybody and tell you what's going to cost. It actually, in the end, might cost a little bit less because the steps are consistent two and a half percent versus you've got a lot of steps at four percent and three percent and two percent. So it might be actually, I'll say, cost neutral, I won't say it saves you money, but it might be somewhat cost neutral than what you're doing right now.
I do need to point something out. We probably failed to give you some information. Currently, the county's payout provisions for vacation and sick are in the form of cash, dependent on whether you are of a certain age. We belong to the South Dakota Retirement System Special Pay Plan. Anybody who is fifty-five and is leaving our employment, their payout of vacation and sick is required to go to South Dakota Retirement System. And then the employee has the ability to either leave it there and let it grow or draw it out.
Okay.
So I noticed that in here and I'm pretty sure we just failed to give you that information.
Yeah.
Which, that's okay.
So I would take the place of that, the, the.
Yeah. Yeah, what we recommended, I did gloss over it, is we have a lot of organizations, especially municipal government, where they pay out vacation or sick leave. Sometimes they pay out sick leave, the whole balance, sometimes it's a portion of it, but sometimes it can be a pretty good cash payout. And there's a huge tax implication for both the employee and the employer because both of you are paying all those employment taxes on it. And so what we say is starting up a health savings retirement account where you put what, what you're doing. You put money into this health savings account. And most, the good thing about it, it can be used for any type of medical expenses. So I, if I have my Medicare premiums, if I need eyeglasses, if I need hearing aids. I guess I'm dating myself because I know what I'd be doing at that age. So it pays for any of that. The bad thing about it, it's not a lump sum cash bonus like they are getting now or what we're getting now, where I then can go out and buy my boat for retirement. You know, it has to be used for health expenses. But the good thing about it, it goes into that account tax-free. It's paid out tax-free. So there's not the tax implications for both the county and for the employee. So we're seeing a move for that a lot across the country.
So I think, yeah, for the other commissioners in the, yeah, you actually must have found the pay scale in the appendix there. So the salary schedule, so it's much, that's three pages as opposed to however many pages.
You have two Excel spreadsheets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
I do like the number of step reductions and stuff like that. I've read this several times. There's a lot of information in here. There's a lot to digest. I don't believe that when you get into a step, the upper steps and supervisory, it would take a $20,000 pay increase to do that. I, my voters wouldn't go along with that. Plain and simple.
Yeah. I will say this, and I don't disagree with you, obviously you have your, it is getting more difficult to find department director positions across the country and those salaries are going up. So if you're looking to have to replace your auditor or finance, if you're looking to replace your highway, I think you're going to be surprised at what you're going to have to pay in order to get those folks here.
The last time we had hired on one of those boards, we didn't have any lack of applications.
Okay.
Well, like the auditor, treasurer, registry, those are elected positions as well.
That's true.
Yeah. That's a little different.
Yeah.
And I, I think to our local area, to some point, that is somewhat skewed.
I think as I, as I review this and I look at a couple of things that, and I think about as we interview and we hire department heads, and that's what comes to mind right away. I, I, I hope that this would resolve the issue of we want to make an offer to Jamie or whoever, but we don't know where to start. We don't know, where should we pay, which we pay them, you know, where do we start? You know, we need something that we can go to and grasp so that we go, actually even into the interview process. We know this is, you're gonna be your salary range, you know, we give them a range. We do that kind of by guessing, by gosh, by the seat of our pants, to be honest with you. And, and then we have some pushback once in a while, then we cave in and give them a little bit more. But I mean, you know, we need to, we need to solidify that. The other thing that I, that I have noticed in all the years here is that, and this was expressed by Commissioner Waterman, that I don't know if we really had an issue getting candidates for the, even the, even the department head jobs. Maybe a little bit more in that end. I know we struggled a little bit in our new welfare director. It took us a little while to get applications in, but we did have applications. But that would be something that I think, I'm sure if that salary schedule would be higher, that would probably gone more.
I think another thing that we need to look at is, yeah, we, we don't seem to have a problem when it comes to recruiting employees to take over those positions. But that's all changing. You know, it just came out yesterday, the average salary at Lake Area Tech for a graduate, the average salary starting out of school is $60,000 a year. Those are the graduates that are coming right from school into the workforce. And so I think we have to do our part to stay up with that. Because if we don't, we fall behind and, and I'm not saying it's gonna reduce our quality of applicants that we're gonna get, but it could reduce the pool of applicants that we get. So I like to see this, but I like to see that, that we're, we're doing good things right now with, with where we should be, but we have a little work to do. And Cindy, how long has it been since we've had this done? 20 years?
It was in 1990s.
At least 20 years ago that we did this, so.
I will tell you also that.
Really just been patchwork up to this point. So this is nice to have this document.
Now, when we have been advertising for clerical positions, 20 years ago, we may have gotten 80 to 100 applications. We are not getting that anymore.
Yeah. I think you'd find, you'd be hard pressed to see that amount of applications anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah. In counties our size.
The bottom line is, is that we represent our constituents. We represent our people that live in county and county. And the fact is, is that I think if you look at county and county, I think the salaries in county and county are somewhat depressed. You know, and, and so we don't want to break, we, we can't break the bank here. You know, this is the thing that we have to be, you know, this 190 to 200,000 dollars just to bring in between now and the end of the year, basically what we're talking about. I know there's some constituents of ours out there that are just shaking their head right now.
But on the flip side, we gotta pay our people so that they can afford to live here. You know, I mean, look at housing, look at the housing market, you know, look at the cost of living. I mean, that's wherever you go. You can't even buy a house in Watertown right now because there's none available, you know.
Just keep in mind that 190,000 is for the whole year. So if you implement it in September, it's, it's not that.
It's important to.
Of course, portion for the remaining. I know I've been part of that process with our previous steps and, and the inconsistencies in that. And like you had pointed out, you know, there could be cost savings because now we're going to be consistent. And where that will make a difference when we do this as well, that we're not gonna have this all over of just, yeah, I know it was very difficult trying to find placement for individuals and starting, you know, so you have to start them at five. So you obviously know there's something wrong with your wage scale if you're not being able to start at step one and you have to go clear to five.
Really, there's never an easy time to implement or make a change in your pay scale. Right? I mean, it's kind of a pill that you have to swallow and get it done. And then when it's, once it's done, you have to maintain it. If we don't do this, we're gonna fall further and further behind. And it's gonna cost us more money in the long run to do it later.
Actually, this really is a very low cost. I mean, I deal with some that are five, six, 700,000 just to implement. And so actually, I know it's a, it's a lot for you and I'm not trying to diminish that. But in the grand scheme of things, it's, it's really not that bad. And, and to go to your point too, I think the other thing is, is that it's not in the executive report, but Natalie has it. There are rules for this now. So it's not this, you can't start people just where you want to. I mean, you're starting people at step one if they have the minimum skills and qualifications. You can start higher than step one with HR's approval. And if you're gonna start higher than that, then we need to get some, no, it doesn't mean you can't start, start someone higher than step six. You know, you may have the, the person who wrote the book on snowplow move into your area and wants to become the highway superintendent. And you may have to pay higher than that in order to get them. But you know, there are now our rules in which you start people and there's rules on how you move people through that system.
And it's based on the position. So I like that too, that now it is based on what that position is and what's required for it, all these other.
I don't know if this is a question for you or for Cindy, but let's say we implement this thing, and I heard you one time say that, you know, according to the salary schedule, whatever, that they would be taking the reduction in pay so that because of that you'd move them up, you know, to a different step. So is there any employees that we have in our system right now that would have to take a cut?
No.
That's, that's, okay, I wanted it heard here.
No.
Everybody moves forward, not backwards.
She said they'll move up to the.
Because sometimes when you do these, some of these things, you know, or you're stagnant. You don't get, you're nothing.
And no one is stagnant at Isaac. Usually sometimes we have some people that if we've cut down the system from 14 steps to 12 steps, you might have some folks that are hanging out on the end or over, that are over the market, which we call red circled. You have no one that's red circled. They're all on a step. Now, they might be very high on the step based upon their tenure, but then there's no one at the top or over the top of the schedule.
Then the important thing is going forward that we keep, keep this current, you know, is it three years or five years? Depending on what's happening at the time, that we don't run into this situation again. And then it's more cost effective to do it that way than to do a whole new study 20 years from now.
So, yeah, so an update would just basically be looking at the comparables for the most part. Any changes, organizational changes, maybe a few new jobs, but you wouldn't have to do all those long questionnaires.
No, not a, in fact, I'm doing an update right now with a county that we did their schedule back in 2008. We're using the same comparable, so we're going out and getting a market data. We talked to all the department directors because there are some new positions that have come in. So those positions, we're asking if they have not done it to complete a position questionnaire and making sure that we have that information for the point factor system. And then what we're doing is they have a step system as well. But the preliminary data looks like is we're probably gonna be dropping steps one and two. We're gonna be adding one step at the end, moving market up one step. And there's about four or five positions that will change pay ranges and then we're done. Yeah.
Parts of this, I can 100% agree with. Parts of this, I would, if this was, if this was to be in its entirety, yes or no, this would be a no. One, it's, there are certain parts of it I really like. It's, we started off with a compensation from a certain department because they didn't feel that they were being fairly paid. It was a lower ended. We've come up that a large percentage are compensated that way. It turns out that this is weighted towards the upper end. So the workers themselves are going to be not the ones that are going to be benefiting probably percentage wise as much, but the other, the upper end is where you're saying we're short.
There are some positions on the upper end, there are some positions on the lower end as well that will have some significant increases. They're just not in the one you're seeing. Because you have to negotiate those.
Yeah, because those under, those employees fall under a contract.
And we, we haven't talked about at all, and you haven't brought it up. When we go to a board and we talk to people about hiring people, I think we put a very, very human side to it. And intangible. Guess that's not dollars. And if dollars is the only thing you're talking about, then dollars is not gonna keep something.
Well, there's more to compensation system than just the grid. And I'm only talking about the grid. I think there are some things that you have to start selling that you don't do very well in selling. You know, there are some positions that may not be, the step one may not be as high as some of what the comparables are. It's close, you know, it's within, you know, 50 cents to a dollar. But you also have, start selling the fact that you still have 100% health insurance. So there are things that you have to sell with that. And you're right, you have to look at an individual, whether or not they fit into your culture. You're right, I'm not talking about that today because we're talking about strictly the salary portion. You know, Natalie has to take into account all of those other factors when hiring an individual. And I would not expect you to do every recommendation in here. I mean, obviously the salary grid is what is the main component. There's health insurance, there's time off issues that I think you're gonna have to take some time to take a look at and whether or not they're right for you and whether or not it'll be cost effective for you. But again, the salary structure and everything is based off of data. It's not based off of something that I would like to see. It's based off the data and what the average market has for those positions. You do have some places around you that pay very, very well and you're competing with them. And so are we paying as much as they are? No. You know, there's definitely some salaries in Watertown that will definitely steer some people away from you. There's definitely some places in, um, thank you, Brookings. We did not include, Brookings got thrown out of the average on quite a number of positions because they're being paid very, very well. So you're not competitive with Brookings. I mean, you're closer, but you're not gonna like Brookings. Thank you.
Now, now, I don't know, if I fell asleep at the wheel here, just refresh me or get my, I can't get my head wrapped around it from year to year. Okay, the increase in the compensation for the employees on a given year, at the end of the year to the next year. See, in the past, we've just used the COLA.
Correct.
And then the, and the step. Okay, what would be the difference in what we would be doing now?
Sure, you'd be doing the same thing. So you're gonna look at what's the, what's the COLA gonna be for 2022? And I heard you say it's, you know, close to 2.3 or 1.2 or whatever number you wanna use.
1.0.
So, you know, I would say, you know, you're gonna look at the schedule and say, what do you want to do for next year? Probably 1.5. You wanna make sure that you're keeping that schedule updated. So you're doing the same thing each year.
Same.
If it's 2008 and it's stagnant, you're not gonna do anything, you know, because there's nothing happening in the market that would cause it to do that. Then every three years, what you want to do is just kind of take a look at the external market.
Yeah.
What kind of positions have changed, have, have, you know, like I said before, I think the minimum salaries are a little bit of a misnomer right now because there's a lot of folks doing compensation studies. So three years from now, all those minimums, you know, might be popping up because they've done compensation studies. So you might want to take a look at it. But it's not blowing up the schedule and starting all over again.
So, and the other thing, Mary, was as far as, it was the timing of the step increase, just putting everybody at the same time each year in July. So that, and that would be a, just to simplify the system, it'd be a lot easier to manage the payroll.
And the steps are consistent, they're all the same, correct? Same amount, so before we had that.
And the salary schedule that I will give to the counties in Excel spreadsheet. So that's all that Cindy and Natalie have to do is each step is not its own percentage. Each step is based off a constant. And so therefore you just change that constant and you change everything. Or you change one number and the whole schedule updates for the following year. So.
Handy.
Whether your payroll system can do all that stuff is another story.
This is a, are we equipped, Cindy? Do we have to revamp any software? Are we?
No.
We're, we're equipped to handle any of these changes.
The changes that they're giving are hourly, so that's, yes.
And even the, the system that we're talking to the sheriff about, about implementing, Natalie and I have had some conversations. What can we do to make it more of an easier way to implement, so not making a lot of variations? I think we might have a little problem where if you give them a stipend, an hourly increase while they're doing the job, I think you can't just put a number in and, and it'll add it and then take it away. I think she's gonna have to actually change the salary each time. But if we keep those to a minimum, we should be okay.
Does this mean we don't have to hire them on the 17th? Not that it's been a problem.
That has nothing to do, that has to do with health insurance.
I know.
So that, yeah, that has nothing to do with salaries, it's eligibility for health insurance.
Yeah, it's gotta be the 17th.
No, the first or the 15th.
Or you're not covered.
Well, we've kept Cindy in the loop, so Cindy and Natalie has kept me in the loop. Whatever we do is not gonna be so cumbersome.
I always gotta chuck the load when we did that, but I, I know it's all part of the.
Well, it, for the employees that are coming in.
Jump through the hoops, right?
It's, yeah, it, it's when they become eligible for health insurance, so that is, yeah.
Well, I think, you know, I've, I've read through this a couple of different times myself. I, I think it looks good. I appreciate you and your organization's work on it. I know that there's a lot of time spent on this. You're coming into a county that you're not familiar with, not knowing a lot about our county, but comparing our county to other counties our size and similar resources and putting us in line with, with what's going on nationwide. And I think we need to stay on top of that, so.
I appreciate you, you and your company as well as, we got some friends out in the hall apparently. Natalie, all the work that she's done and Cindy and, and I think Harley and, and Lee were involved in helping out too. And appreciate all the work that's gone into it. And you've answered a lot of questions that I had today, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, this has certainly been an eye opener and, and our, our step system that we have now is kind of came about because it came about. And there really wasn't, there's no, there's no real good explanation for it. We met a need and we solved it and it worked for a long, long time. But simplification is better and it, it also is easier to build on in the future.
All right, well, I don't know what everybody has said. Appreciate all the time you have put in, Natalie and.
Thank you, now you're meeting with the employees this afternoon?
Yes.
And so that, then the, I'm sure, just so, just so people understand the next step. So now we have to kind of digest this. Victoria's gonna be talking to the employees to, you know, and see if they have any other questions in similar presentation, but they'll probably have a bunch of questions, I'm sure. And then, you know, in the coming weeks, we have to decide, you know, which parts of these recommendations do we want to take? Especially as we're looking at the budget, so.
Right, with the budget coming up. Need a direction to go.
All right.
A lot of information.
Let's move on to item number 13, discussion, possible action to pass a resolution to enact a ban on open burning. And Jamie is here, if you can come up and give us the latest update of where we're at. Please.
Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. Well, this last week is looking pretty well improved again. I only, I had a tenth of an inch over the weekend as a whole in my personal gauge at home. But I'm looking at the grassline fire indexes for the week. We're in that green category currently today. Tomorrow, we jump to a modern, moderate category, but things are looking pretty well positive still. As for say, the last couple of weeks. OEM Office sent out what is the forecast for May on our South Dakota East Central outlook. Ample precipitation over the past 60 days. Drought conditions have lessened over the past month and near average precipitation over this past year in our area, which I've given to you previously. I'm looking at that for the month of May. They're showing northeast and east central still relatively remaining low. Got some chances of rain. End of, maybe Thursday night, Friday and then end of the weekend again. So currently, I'd say we are still sitting in a very good green category as things green up. Looks like things are gonna remain as far as May, still those equal chances of precipitation. Maybe even some thunder Sunday night, the way it looks so far. With that said, that's, I'd say we are still in a very positive situation currently, so.
Sounds good.
I don't see any need, know whether you guys want to continue weekly through May or not. I did notice last week, Thursday, the red flag criteria hit. But as things green up, there is still quite a bit of dead hatch underneath some of that greenness as April was relatively cool. We didn't get the green as quick.
It probably helped that we've stayed cool these last few days as well, so.
But we can continue meeting weekly and just stay on top. Well, we can continue meeting weekly and just stay on top of it, if that's what we want, so.
I think that would be a good idea, just leave it on the agenda, week by week.
Yep, thanks, y'all.
All right, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
All right, item number 14, action, possible discussion on COVID-19 practices, policies, procedures. Natalie, do we have anything? I know there's some things we probably need to address and relax and remove, and so we'll work, keep working on that. You're kind of busy with this other right now, so. All right, absolutely. Item number 15, action to approve claims for payment.
You have a list of claims on your desk. I didn't highlight too many things, there weren't too many changes. Total claims this month, $1,115,758.47. Of that amount, just over $675,000 goes directly to the state of South Dakota for collection of motor vehicle license plate fees in the month of April. Let's see, on page four is the first half appropriation for the predatory animal budget, and this is a budget that is mandated, mandated by the state of South Dakota. It's based on the number of livestock that the county is currently being assessed. That is our first half amount, we'll pay another amount back in, probably in September or October. On page six, under the county nurse budget, there is an amount of $7,084. That is our first and second quarterly appropriations for the amount that we contract with the Department of Health for community health nursing, nursing services. And on page eight, you can see our planning and zoning technical services, January through March, just over $6,800. Basically, that's the, the highlights this month. Anything else that you would have questions on, I can try and answer.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. So any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post, that motion carries. Item number 16, action, excuse me, to approve automatic budget supplements. We have one.
We actually have two. We also had some POD, automatically, automatic supplements, we can do some bills that came in, and these are POD funds that we have had, we don't have a lot of POD funds left, but we do have enough to supplement the emergency management, emergency management budget, $1,114.71, and that was for miscellaneous supplies for the clinics, food for the workers who are volunteering out there, and signs for the POD event. And actually, it wasn't a POD event, it was a mass vaccination event, but we contacted the state, the state said we could use these POD funds. So that's reduced our POD funds that, we haven't received any in recent years, so we've just been spending down what we've had. And then the second automatic supplement is to the Veterans Service Budget, in the amount of $5,300, Veterans Service Budget received donations for the new van from the Vietnam Veterans of America, the American Legion Cottington County Post 17, the VFW Post 750, the Northeast SSE Vietnam Veterans Group, and the Knights of Columbus, all donated funds towards that new van in the amount of $5,300, and we can put that back into that budget, so we just need one motion for both.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Van Duzen, second by Gable. Any other questions, comments?
Comment would be, we need to extend a thank you to these organizations for stepping up and making contributions.
And I'm sure, I'm sure Todd has, has taken care of that, but I will check with him.
Appreciate it very much, thank you.
That definitely helped the cause. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, that motion carries. Item number 17, action to approve personnel changes. We have several of those.
Three of those. The first one is Sarah Test, she is a clerk in the Director of Equalization Office, she's due a step, anniversary step increase to step eight, 1925 per hour, and I believe her employer has provided Troy with the annual evaluation for that position. The second one is Lucas Langrock, he was hired as a seasonal building maintenance worker at Memorial Park, he'll go, he'll be at step one, 1581 per hour. And then we have a seasonal employee at the Highway Department to handle mowing and other various duties, and that is Jeff Riley. He is a rehire, I believe, from last year, he'll go to, he'll be at step one, 1475 per hour.
Motion to approve.
By Johnson, second by Gable. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Item number 18, action to approve travel requests.
Nothing for today.
All right, 19, public notices. Tomorrow is Ozu Valley Commissioners District Meeting here in Watertown, 12 o'clock noon out at the extension. Is there any other events that there could be a possible quorum during this afternoon?
Just to stop by with the employee meetings, if some commissioners might stop by.
There is a candidate forum tonight too, for city council, or for the mayor's race, and for, 6 o'clock. The event center, it will be for the mayor's race and also the school board election, and then on Thursday, it's the city council, so it could be a quorum.
Also, the Go Blue Parade, could have that, I guess we should mention, yes, that's on Friday, that it is Go Blue Week, so, and appreciation for all those officers.
National Law Enforcement Week.
Oh, put theirselves in that line of duty, appreciate all that they do for us. I'm just looking here, I guess I don't see anything else either that there could be a quorum.
Thursday, we have that meeting with Sarah.
Oh, yes, that's Thursday, okay, is it Thursday or today?
It's Thursday. It's like they changed it to Thursday.
Yeah, they did, yeah, you're right, they did. And I have a JDAI meeting, but that's, I think I'm the only one going to that.
Is that the, the one for Sarah, is that the one at the PD?
Yeah, yeah.
But it's.
That's the agency one, so.
Oh, yeah, it's going to be at Hy-Vee, was it PD? All right, so there could be a quorum at those events as well.
Who's on second?
Do we have any old business? Yeah. Any old business? How about new business? Hearing none, do we have anything for the open? I don't think we ended up with any public comments, we would have been notified.